Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Policy Subcommittee Meeting for Wednesday, October 7th. Mrs. Cabral, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Hetzel?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Would you all please join me for a salute to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Good evening, everybody. Mrs. Cabral, do we have any -- Mrs. Cabral, do we have any citizens' input this evening?
No, we do not.
Having no citizens' input, there are a couple of policies, an overview here on the agenda this evening. What I'd like to do is first turn it over to our Superintendent, Dr. Malone, for a brief overview of each, and then we'll go from there. Dr. Malone, good evening.
Thank you for having me. Joined by Assistant Superintendent Ponce and Loesch tonight. We have these meetings at least once a year on policy issues, usually twice a year generally, and then we have them more specifically when we have policies we need. But the way that we've been breaking it down in the last couple of years has worked for us, that we receive every year updating policies from your association, MASC. And MASC sends us policies that we've adopted in our policy manual, and they offer suggested changes. So what we look at is, we look at it, it's been all reviewed by their attorneys and by others at MASC, and it's based on issues that are changing in the state of Massachusetts' schools, or education landscape. So we bring those forward every year. For us, those are, yeah, no brainers, because we adopt the policy manual of MASC, and then we have very specific, our own policies. But most of the general stuff that you need to survive and thrive under the law is all boilerplate language across the Commonwealth. So the first set of these are essentially, from the harassment down to the bottom of student photographs, are updates that your association is suggesting districts adopt as changes in their policy manuals. So what we do is we give you the current policy and what their suggested language changes are, and we ask you to review it and recommend to approve. We then would take that and it would go forward to the full committee for final adoption, which then, on our webpage, all of our policies are articulated, the new policies are replaced or replace the old policies that we change. So the first batch of these are boilerplate, simple policies, changes with a couple of language changes here and there. I looked at these, members of my team did, we didn't see any that jumped out at us as in any need of review beyond what MASC has already done.
So that's the items in 3.1?
Three, uh, yes, in 3.1, I'm sorry.
Are there any major changes, or, I mean, I know you said some of these languages, but...
Just small language in these. This is why we put these in one bundle.
So are there any, any discussion on the policies outlined in 3.1?
The only discussion I'd like to try to bring up, like you said, it's boilerplate, so these policies are already on the books already, so as long as the changes are minor or one word, two words, everything else looks like it's been, like, fairly established before. So kids' photographs.
Yeah, so if I give you an example, if you turn to the JRD, we have the current policy from 2010, which was the last time we did real big ones, and then we have theirs on the back, and really, you can see what they bold the changes. It's nothing, it's pretty much the same language, maybe a word or two or a comma added, but I don't see any reason why the MASC recommended changes would alter any of our operating abilities.
And they're going to formalize it and put it into a new, a new manual that would include all the revisions?
Well, we do that.
Yeah.
We do that after it goes to the full committee. We would then, if they approve it, because we have on file all the policies that have been adopted over time here, right? Every time they get updated. So an annual policy review, MASC does pretty much each year with a small number of policies, and they update those, and then we adopt them and hire. So as you can see, most of these are 2010 adoptions, so they haven't been reviewed by legal or anyone in 10 years, so the MASC is saying, hey, you should adopt these. Even if there's no language changes, the fact that we reviewed them, the date gets updated on them. So for these policies, we'll have a 2020 date on them, which, when people look through policy manuals, that's a good thing to have, because it shows that we've been active with whatever changes are recommended.
Very good, thank you.
And not only is it good practice, but certainly, I know when Department of Elementary and Secondary Education had come down quite a few years back, one of the things they reviewed was our policy manual, and one of the things that was discussed was, we had a number of policies, some of which were outdated, in that that was the practice going forward, was to, every time we adopt them, obviously, to date them so that we knew which ones were more current and which ones, obviously, were in need of maybe some changes given the times. So if there aren't any discussions on any more of the policies in 3.1, I'll entertain a motion to refer those to the full committee.
So moved.
Made by Mr. Hetzel, is seconded by Mr. Corey. Roll call.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
So Section 3.2 is a discussion to rule the following policies from the Florida Public School Policy Manual, and the recommended for removal would be policies IHA, which is Basic Instruction Program, JL-A, which is Student Insurance Program, JLB, which is Guidance Program, and JP, which is Student Gifts and Solicitation. Dr. Malone, could you tell us a little bit about the recommendation?
So this is a recommendation from the MASC, but it's a recommendation not based on a policy, like a change out. They're saying they're irrelevant, but since I've got 15 years doing this, my advice would be, instead of removing them, we maintain them, but we update the date on them, and we can always remove them in the future if needed. Because if you don't have a policy, you don't have one. But you have one, it's not redundant. Sometimes it's redundant if you have, like, one that addresses. So what I would suggest that the committee does on this is, hey, we've listened to the MASC, they said remove these, we're saying, okay, some of the stuff may be redundant, but what we'd rather do is just update the date and then see if there's any fallout down there. I don't think there is, because it's really just language that doesn't impact anything we do, but a lack of a policy without its actual replacement with the same three numbers leaves you with less cover. So I wouldn't say, yeah, we should just do as they say on this one, this one may be one that you guys would reconsider and say, what we want to do is update the dates, and just say, we reviewed and adopted these on this date, and if we needed a different time to come forward, we can always do that to remove them.
Do we have a...
These are the ones we have, and there's no replacement for them, Mark. So what they're saying here is, is that it's covered in other places, but I'm kind of a policy wonk in some ways, and I like when it gets granular on some certain things. So without the replacement of an actual number with the same one, I would suggest we just hold on to these and update the date.
And was there any background as to why they were suggesting removal?
Just because the language is covered in other areas, but we don't have the full, also, kit and caboodle of all the policies that MASC has. Over the years, we've purchased what we wanted, and then we've adopted our own. So this is what we have in place now. We could remove it, you know, but I'll give you an example. In the next section, I'm bringing forward a technology policy developed by Attorney Joyce. That does say, remove now these things, because they're all-inclusive now, one stop shot. So this is a little different. If we remove these, I don't think it hurts us, but if we keep them, it doesn't hurt us either, Mark. That's all I'm saying on this one.
Any discussion, Mr. Corey?
Mr. Hetzel? So I'll just pick one of these policies. So the Student Insurance Program, so it's a very small policy, it's two paragraphs, but the second paragraph, all students participating in competitive athletics should be required to be covered by a medical insurance plan. So that's a plan that we've discussed meetings, right to the purpose every year.
And it's covered in different places in the policy for athletic participation and those things.
Okay.
So it can be redundant, but I can also pull this out, and we can have four policies covering the same thing. So I would suggest, again, without me coming forward with something to say, this is the reason why to fully replace it, just upon MASC's recommendation on this one, you're updating it anyway, so you're taking a review of it. You're just not, you're not eliminating it at the present time.
Right, we're not eliminating it. Your recommendation would be to keep all four.
I would say, my recommendation to the committee on this one would be to maintain these policies with updated dates that they were reviewed on that time. And in the future, if we gotta bring it forward, we will, but that's few and far between. But you got also, like, the full MASC policy binder's about this big, then there's another one that's like this big. There's gazillions of policies. We have a good working one, and we've added our stuff to it. Most places have a ton of stuff that's not even relevant anymore, but the fact that we reviewed it and we said, well, that's important, like, that is important, we shouldn't remove that. So if we update it with a date, people are gonna say, oh, in 2020, five years from now, oh, we talked about that then, we approved it then, and that's what we've been operating from.
Mr. Chair, is there a way we let the full committee decide in the future of these, instead of us deciding, we can just forward this to the...
We can just refer the discussion of removal to the full committee, and have the full committee weigh in on us whether to remove or maintain them. All it takes is a referral to the committee as is, without any, you know, either support or lack thereof from the subcommittee.
Right.
So if there's a motion, I'll entertain a motion to refer these policies to the committee for consideration, to either remove or to maintain.
So moved.
And we, at that time, we can, I'm sorry.
Made by Mr. Hetzel, seconded by Mr. Corey. Any further discussion, Mr. Corey? No? Roll call?
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Mr. Superintendent, you gonna say?
Well, I was just gonna say, at that time, we can have more discussion about pros and cons.
Right. I mean, the other thing we could do as a committee is decide to, somewhere in a policy manual, have a section of inactive policy.
Right.
They're still there, and then...
They're still there, and they were reviewed on certain dates.
Correct. And then if, for some reason, you know, the committee feels as though, at least they're there, just, you know, the tab in the policy book that, you know, is there and that we review them annually, and if the need arises, that, you know, it's in there, if not, then, you know, we can always look to see what policy that replaced or, as it says here, of course, referenced.
Yes.
Item number 3.03 is a discussion to review and update the nondiscrimination policy within the Florida Public School Policy Manual. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, all right. So this one, I'm not asking you to adopt anything. What I'm bringing forward to you is every single policy where we have language around diversity, equity, difference, et cetera. This came up during the spring, at the time of unrest nationally. There were outside of the district, community members that reached out to me and said, Matt, you know, what does your policy say around how you're gonna promote diversity and support equity and, you know, those kinds of things? And I said, well, and they brought, said, you know, Matt, some of your policies haven't been reviewed since 2010 in this regards. So I reached out to MASC, I reached out to several of the districts that had been working on this, and I said, what do you guys have in place? Most places have the same, similar kind of, of policies, and we've included those in the back here. We included some, oh, they're in a separate binder.
Yep.
I'm giving you each a copy from other districts that have, that have worked on this. And my question to the committee is... You can close that?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. This happens with the wind here. My question to the committee is, what I'd like the committee, or what I'm asking you guys to do, is direct me to go back and work on this and bring something forward, and perhaps have a member of this committee be part of that work group, and then when we bring something back, we're bringing something back that kind of ties together all these disparate, different policies with something more along the lines of what some of the other systems have put together. So we would work with Attorney Joyce, we'd work with MASC, we'd work with a small team that we have, and we'd write something up and bring it back to the full committee, I mean, to the subcommittee at a later time for discussion, and that could be really a metric of this school committee's progress this year. If we've actually reviewed these and come up with either new language or kept same language, made some changes, but updated them, that's a, that's a big victory for the, for the district. So I would, I would ask the committee to send, direct me, the subcommittee, to direct me to go back, work on this, and bring something forward in the future, and maybe I could have someone like Tom Corey be liaison from the subcommittee on that.
Mr. Corey?
I would have no problem serving, I just wanna make sure it's the right thing to do.
Yeah, you know, you know, policy is, is what drives what we do. You know, without policy, you know, organizations, businesses, you know, school departments, whatever it is, tends to go awry without good, clear policy. People look to policy when they're deciding how things are gonna be done in a particular organization or department, and should be no different for us, and, you know, I think this one is long overdue. Quite frankly, 10 years old, I mean, there's been a lot of things that have gone on over 10 years that I think that, as a district, we should look to refine and update this policy to be more reflective of the times. And so I don't necessarily, you know, have a stance either way. Mr. Superintendent, I don't, I don't mind a small group putting something together with the assistance of Attorney Joyce for the committee's review. Mr. Corey, if, you know, if this is something you're interested in, certainly, unless it's met with any objection by Mr. Hetzel, certainly not by me, I think, you know, someone who has a deep knowledge of equity and inclusion and diversity, and I think you'd be a great person to speak on this issue. So I don't think you need any direction necessarily from us. Dr. Malone, I would just say that it's important, and I would look forward to something coming back to this committee rather expeditiously, because I think this is something that's, you know, overdue and needs to be updated. I don't think we have to recreate the wheel, I think we have a policy already, we have some other policies that you've provided us. I think it's just a matter of crossing those that we have and looking at the demographics and the makeup of our district and what our vision is, and I'm sure it probably aligns with most other districts. So I don't think it's, you know, gonna be heavy lifting, if you will, but certainly work that needs to be done. So, Mr. Hetzel, any comments or...
Well, just one thing, so I notice all these are from the Boston Public Schools.
Oh, they, yeah, they do things a little different, but we have examples from New Bedford and a couple other places too in there.
Right.
The Boston ones do, is, they call them circuit, is it...
Superintendent Circuits.
Superintendent Circuits, that's their policy manual. So they do one for everything, we're not doing that. We're gonna have something united and tight, coupled with what Attorney Joyce thinks we need to have his language, with what MASC says we need to have its language. So we're not gonna be going that deep. There's reasons why they have those kinds of things, and we have our things.
Absolutely, we're just gonna look for the things that, what the chairman said, that have changed over time over the past decade, you know.
But it may come back looking like, in this case, we may actually remove a couple of these, because we're gonna say it differently in one concise document. So that's, I'm kind of excited about getting to the bottom of this, figuring it out.
Sounds great, thank you.
Any further discussion, Mr. Corey?
And the request was to be expeditious, do we want to create a timeline?
You know, if, if necessary, I don't wanna, timelines, to me, always sort of, I think they sometimes hamstring the work.
Yeah.
I would just do it with the intent of being expeditious, without saying definitively, because then I feel like people are pressed. Things may come up from now until that deadline that we set that puts things, you know, further back, and what I don't want to have happen is something come back to us that's not ready.
Okay.
Expeditious, but I also want it to be a good, sound policy, that we can wrap our hands around and agree that that's what we want, to be the guide, the document that guides the district. So I don't necessarily have a time in mind, I would just ask that, this is something that, between everything else that's going on, and opening of schools, and monitoring the health and welfare and safety of our employees and our, and our students, that this is important as well.
And that's why we didn't let it go, even though, you know, so I was envisioning trying to get back to this august group prior to the December meeting, so there could be discussion at December meeting. If we can pull that off, that's what my goal would be. So that gives me time to get a couple things in place, get some writing done, and editing and discussion.
That's good.
Yeah.
The other issue is that, that at this time, it's not like we're absent policy.
No, we're not absent policy, no one's told us...
If we were absent of policy, I'd say December's a little far out, but we have one.
And no one's told us we have to do anything here, it was just suggested by members of the committee, of the community, saying, you need to take a look at your policies and update them, because they haven't been looked at. So I said, you're right, and that's where we started. And I'm glad you're right, and I'm glad we didn't just say, oh, we can't do this, because we're busy with everything else, because this is so important to the district.
It is. So that's fine, if you want to use that as a barometer, December as a, as a target.
Yeah.
Obviously, if it's ready to go and can come before a sooner than that, we'll take it. If not, you know, I'm sure when it's ready, it'll come back and we'll take some action on it. Any further discussion on item 3.03? So moving on to item number 3.04.
Yeah.
Which is a, to review and adopt and follow new policies of our public schools. So those consist of JBB, Educational Equality, JLCB, Immunization of Students, IHBHE, Remote Learning, IHBHE-E, Remote Learning Addendum Title IX and Acceptable Use Policy. So, you know, maybe at some future meeting, we can talk about eliminating six characters to identify a policy, but we can look to tighten that up.
Yeah.
I think it gets confusing when you have five letters representing a particular policy, but maybe we can clean that up. So, Mr. Superintendent, can you tell us a little bit about these proposals?
All right, so I'm gonna go very quickly through each one. Educational equity came from MASC, and it's just an updating of, there was no language, and again, this ties into everything that we just talked about around equity and justice. They don't have any language prior to anything before that talked about a district's commitment specifically to equity. So how do we get all kids to the same levels of achievement and development in ways strategically that understand some kids have to, we gotta do this with, it's the differentiated model of support? So this policy is recommended from MASC as a new, new policy, so it's not replacing anyone, but it adds to our growing number of, of current policy. This is timely in terms of, as you can see, the, we hadn't brought this forward, this was adopted by MASC last year, and we didn't bring it forward. So we're behind a little bit on this one, but I thought it was timely that it was still wise for us to have in place.
Any questions on the first one, Mr. Corey?
As far as the concept of equity, it was, that was the whole drive behind the Student Opportunity Act, so if, if they brought it up in MASC before...
Yeah.
And that was all part of, probably, that platform that was created behind the Student Opportunity Act. So equity is something we certainly wanna move toward, we wanna move toward more equity in our school department here in Fall River, that's a given. How we do it, that's the biggest challenge, I think. As many of us understand, it could be an immense challenge in this community.
Right.
Do you have any ideas how it may be attained?
I think one of the things that the policy does that's different than anything they've had before is, this policy actually talks about how, if you think about 10 years ago, we didn't talk about, and they mention it, individual student and school-level data disaggregated by groups, so we can see who's fallen out where, and then come up with a plan. So it basically supports everything that we're doing with the department around our school improvement plan. So in some ways, it's like MASC getting in line with what already DESE is already regulating. That's all that I see is the updating on this. And, as again, I don't see anything in here that would hurt us if we adopted it as is.
Mr. Hetzel, any questions on that first one?
No.
No, okay. So the next one is the immunizations and of students, which is pretty straightforward, and I think it's set out pretty much in law, that students are required to have vaccinations and immunizations in order to either begin or transfer from one district to another. I do know in here, in bold, you know, obviously during the COVID-19 pandemic, the governor has, you know, declared that, you know, the influenza vaccination is required by students, although my understanding is that's being challenged right now? Is there a court case? I did some reading, I think there's a court case going on right now regarding...
Right, because there's, there's folks that don't believe in vaccinations that are saying you have no right to do this. Of course, it's gonna be challenged. But this policy is simply just updates everything that's in place right now, there's still outs, because what the governor put in there is, on the guidance on that, religious and others can still not have to do the immunizations.
I just don't want to jump ahead with creating policy right now that may be challenged, so...
Right, but the, the good news here is, like, I envisioned this policy, because we're already doing this, I envision this policy when things improve and get better and we're not doing this anymore, there'll be another updating that we'll bring back to the committee.
This is my last point, you know, Senator, or...
Yeah.
I think the reality is that the state of Massachusetts already dictates to parents that you had to get immunizations for your son or daughter to come to school. Regardless of how I feel about it, that's, that's irrelevant, but, you know, this, I think, is another immunization that, again, you know, there are options to opt out, you know, by parents and, you know, so regardless of, I think, how I feel personally about whether you should or shouldn't have it, I think that's irrelevant at this point. But the argument that the state can't mandate students get a particular immunization or vaccine, vaccine, we do that already. You can't enroll your son or daughter without mumps, rubella, measles, et cetera, et cetera, so it's happening already. Mr. Corey?
Just, Dr. Malone, please just clarify that for me, as far as the outs are concerned, there are those who practice alternative medicine that don't believe in immunization, but I see that immunization is a safety factor for our school system and all the people in it. So where are the outs? People, can people elect out?
Yeah, there's two outs. One is a religious, what's the term I used?
Religious belief or...
Yeah, but it's a belief, it's a religious exemption. You have to claim something with religion and you can get an exemption. And then the other is... And then the other is a parent who, because of medical issues, doesn't, can't get it with the child. So there was two. It wasn't, I just don't wanna do it. That's where this case is coming from, because there's people saying, no, you can't tell us to do that. But the the problem with the pandemic and the crisis is, it is a public health issue, because we have all sorts of other people working in buildings, not just the kids. So we have to protect them too. So the state's made, you know, DPH made a bold proclamation to the governor here that everyone will have to get this vaccination because we're trying to protect everybody. So that, so as far as we're concerned, everyone's getting it minus these two exemptions, but that those are tight exemptions too. It can't just be all on ex-religion, we don't believe in that. That's gonna be documented and.
So so if there are other cases.
Yeah.
Of people who refuse the immunization based on a prior belief.
Yeah.
Or philosophical belief or or alternative medicine or that kind of thing.
Yeah.
This is a legal issue. Did they have a right to take us?
They have a right to go to cohort B right now. So that would be the full remote cohort. So that that's even, so what's changed also this year is that we now have the, as you know, the ability with McKenney-Vento kids to keep everyone out until we have their full Slater shots.
Okay, good. So we we're covered.
We're covered. We're covered. And, you know, it's a, we're not, see, we wouldn't be covered if we denied someone an education.
Yes.
We're not denying anyone an education.
Right.
Because we've now shown that you can do education differently. So it doesn't have to be the traditional model.
Thank you, Ayud.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. Mr. Hetzel?
I have nothing.
Fair enough. Thank you. So the next one is the remote learning one, which obviously is of importance to us now, given our current situation. So, I mean, having read it, anything in particular that you wanna spotlight in it or?
No, just, this was written prior to the reopening plans that the state put forward. So this just essentially, we adopt this, it says the school committee will have a reopening plan that includes remote as one of the options and what it, what that means when we go remote. So in terms of the adopting this policy, going fully remote if we need to, I would, as you know, you see it, I would announce it like a snow day. And then as soon as possible, get to the committee and we say, what's going on? And say, here's the plan. And you would have to approve whatever the model is that we go to from there. Just as we have already written in our reopening plans.
So I I guess my only concern with that is, and I'm not trying to step on toes here, but you calling a snow day, in my opinion, is different than you declaring that the district's gonna go remote.
It it is different, but then.
So.
Yeah. So that's why, that's why I think the language here says, and then I gotta come to you to get approval in a, what does it say, as soon as possible? Which is different than a snow day. We could be out snow days for two weeks.
Well, that's what I'm saying. And and snow days are, to me, I mean, it's a little different than shutting down a whole district and putting people remote. I think there are bigger implications for the district going full remote than it is out for a day or two or three, whatever, depending on the suit of the weather. So my personal feeling is I would look for language that incorporates or includes the school committee in in that piece. Again, not looking to step on toes. You're here to run the district. The district is entrusted to you. But also, I would just say that as members of the committee, we have a stake in obviously whether our kids are in school or not. And and I think that's reflective in the fact that DESE wanted plans that were approved by school committees in terms of what model they were gonna use. I think it's further evidenced in the guidance that's given and whether you're a district that's in yellow or red or green. Again, guidance, but local authority and local control by school committees in terms of whether or not districts will shut down was sort of outlined in that regard. So I I don't, you know, have an issue with with, as you as superintendent necessarily making the decision. But I I think we need to be careful on how we choose those words on.
Right. Well, I think you're covering on the language mark, because it it says, like, I would on a Tuesday night at 11:00, if I had to make a decision for Wednesday, I'd make that. But we can't go out on remote learning until I get back, I mean, full remote learning as a posture, until I come back and get the approval of the committee. So I think the committee's covered. I don't think it's taken away any rights. As you know, also this year, when I do call a snow day, it will be a remote day, so it's gonna count. And that was, you know, that that's something that, you know, we we've talked about before in terms of what's changed with the state regs on that and God. But this, the, I believe, the reason why MASC developed this, and you can look at the date on it, it was May, right? So right before the reopening plan, I believe the reason why is because they didn't have anything that talked about remote learning. And it'd be all of a sudden, remote learning in a flick of a switch on March 17th became the new thing, right? So this covers that we gotta have a plan, and we have all that. But I think it protects the power of the committee to say, well, we're not gonna just let the superintendent say, we're shutting down, and we shut down for a year, and the school committee have no say in that. That's not what this does.
And and I would say here, publicly, that through the process back in March and even through the development of the reopening plan, you were extremely transparent with with me and I know with members of the committee in terms of what your thoughts were and what you were thinking and what you were trying to accomplish. So I I don't think that's gonna change. I just, once we adopt this policy, it's gonna go into a policy manual and
Yeah.
I, you know, some future school committee may look at it and say, well, wait a minute. You know, why is it, why are we relinquishing full control and authority for remote learning designations to the superintendent? And why isn't the school committee somewhat?
Well, why don't we just change the term up top there in the second paragraph where it says, and shall, why don't we just say, and must?
The addendum.
In the addendum? I saw it in the addendum, that's right.
The addendum, it refers to the school committee, of course, to consider.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Committee's implications.
Right, but that's in their plan. But I'm saying, in terms of the overall thing, that one, and the second line of that, of the first IB or IHBHE, if you just, if we remove that word, shall, and wrote must, because those superintendent, right mind, whoever the superintendent is, no matter when.
I'm missing that. I'm sorry, Dr. Malone. Where?
So.
Under the remote learning.
On the remote learning, second line says, and shall.
When it becomes necessary for the school to, superintendent, the superintendent shall establish a plan and procedures to ensure that such services are provided there?
No.
No.
Second, second line, in the first paragraph.
Oh, in the first.
Second.
Yeah, first part, no, first paragraph.
Am I looking at the same thing?
Yeah.
No, look at the first one. Go to the first one. First paragraph, second, second line.
So the header is the remote learning, correct?
Yep. In the event of a district emergency requiring the use of remote learning. The superintendent schools may declare such an emergency and must, as soon as possible, attain the approval of the school committee. Simple as that. That, I mean, because no one's gonna do this without that. You understand what I'm saying?
Right.
Shall is weak language, right? Ah, shall do it, but I ran out of time, I didn't feel it's important. You know what I mean? So if you just change that to must and adopt that tonight, forward that to the committee, that protects everyone.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, and again, and again, I'm not trying to step on toes. I think, you know, your practice has been above board. It's been in consultation with the committee. I just, like I said, that's a big decision. It's being looked at across the district, it's being looked at across the state. On which districts are still fully remote, which ones are hybrid, why, there's a lot of back and forth going on.
Boston went back today.
Lot of schools, as school committees, you know, under the microscope in terms of what decisions are being made. So I just wanna make sure that we're sharing in that.
I think changing that to must is a, an excellent, good faith effort on both our parts to make sure that, no matter, because you're right, no matter which school committee, which superintendent, the policy's policy until it's changed.
You know, that piece too, as soon as possible, I'm not so sure that's needed either.
I would say.
And must obtain the approval of the school committee.
Yeah, I would say, and must obtain the approval of the school committee.
I don't think as soon as possible, because that's left for interpretation.
I would say within, within two days. Yeah, because you can't, you can't call a meeting without 48 hours.
Right. Well, you're just like a notification, right?
Uh-huh. Well, you gotta prove, no, you would have to go to the, if we went full remote, I can make an announcement tonight. And I would try to get an emergency meeting set up on Thursday, on Friday.
Yeah.
To say, guys.
Yeah, that's fine. I would say within 48 hours.
Yeah. So why don't we say, as soon as possible, within 48 hours?
You're gonna have to call a special meeting.
We're gonna have to call a special meeting.
For 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 the.
So if you were to call remote, wouldn't, wouldn't it be prompted by, is it prompted by the governor's office or local districts, all local districts?
Doomsday scenario. I got a building, we've had a breakout, and it spread to 10 other buildings. I gotta shut everyone down. I just, I can't physically operate.
Something breaks out anyway.
That's gonna be, I mean, that could happen tomorrow. I'd shut the place down, we're remote.
Right.
Call an emergency meeting, guys, here's the situation, guys and girls, here's the situation, what are we gonna do? Lay it out there, say, here's the plan. They say, okay, we're gonna stay in this remote posture for another week and make an assessment. Let's have a meeting scheduled on this date. And we do it that way. That's, like, that's typical. But let's say we're in the red now for four weeks, and we've been talking about it. We keep talking every Friday, you'll get, you know, Wednesday night, you get an email from me. Fri- Friday, you get another email, but there's be a meeting in between, say, you know, do we go to full remote if we stay in the red for four weeks? And it's like 8.9%, but most of it's in senior citizen housing. Do we still go full remote? Now, some people expect us to do that, but others saying, well, look at the data. The data's not, you know, it's not in the schools, it's not in our people. So I think we're gonna need to have cover on that. I can't just make that decision.
Nor would we want to.
Well, and I gotta be honest with you. If you expect me to make that decision on the color coded, I wouldn't make that. I would come to the committee if I said, here's a recommendation. I wouldn't just do that. But the immediate closure, I will do, I will have to do at certain times.
Right, yeah. Sorry.
Yeah.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yeah, I was gonna say that, like, you know, if all of a sudden we know this and I'm pretty sure in our schools, then you gotta, you gotta make that decision.
Right.
It's not gonna require us.
No.
You have to make the decision.
Nor do I want you waiting 48 hours to come ask us to do that, because, I mean, you're gonna put people's health and safety at risk.
You know, I can't go to three foot, I mean, could I or couldn't I? I can't, this is my opinion. I can't go to three foot distance without the approval of the committee, because I wrote it in my plan. Now, I could, because it's an operational issue legally, but that's not good business. We've been in this together. So if I wanted to go to three foot, I would come to the committee and say, hey, guys, this is what the data said over the last three months. I'm, you know, two weeks, let's go to the three foot distance. We can do it. And you guys would say, nope, bad idea. Yes, good idea. Because you remember, you need coverage, I need coverage. None of us are making decisions now that we can all, we gotta be as a team and on the pandemic, all this, you know, so.
If you could tighten that up.
Yeah, so I would just write, so what I would add is.
Even if you reference it, it's shared responsibility, it's a, an acknowledged shared responsibility and decision-making process. So that it's very clear, and again, it gives, we're working together.
Yeah.
Superintendent and your, your staff and the committee working together on on this important issue, because it it's, it may happen. And if it does, we wanna make sure that that we're doing this together and that this isn't, why did the superintendent do this? I get those calls all the time when it snows.
Oh, yeah.
Because people think we, school committees.
I'm calling you at 4:00 in the morning. Hey, Mark, really?
Right. And so we get calls, I'm sure we all get them calls, like, why you guys, why, why you guys shutting down school? There was no snow. I said, the school committee doesn't close schools for inclement weather.
Right.
That's not within our purview. So I just want this to be clear, this is different, I think, in my eyes than inclement weather, but.
Yeah, no, I just think, I think if we change the language from shall to must, we can add the 48 hours for emergency meeting, and then add a sentence at the end, a school, approve the school committee, comma, as these decisions are joint decisions requiring the involvement of governance and management collegial, or collegial or something like that. I'll come up with something. We'll bring it forward.
So just, just a point of clarity.
Sure.
When the, when, if that decision, let's say, is a breakout.
Yeah.
Are all, are those demographic data numbers coming out of the mayor's office for you to make your decision on? Where are you getting the data, where are you getting the data from?
Okay, so all data right now comes out of DPH. The only numbers that, when the mayor talks numbers, he's talking the same numbers I have.
Right. I just want to know where the numbers are emanating from, all DPH.
And the specificity of the numbers, where, meaning like, it's at the Rest Haven Nursing Home or at the Charlton Hospital. That all comes out by a local board of health. But they gotta spit that stuff up before it gets spit back down. You understand what I'm saying?
They're gonna make sure that that their numbers are accurate before we make any kind of declarations.
Yeah, and we only hear about it after the state says, yeah, we're supporting that. So, you know, test could say, oh, we had five, five new outbreaks. They spit that up to the state public health. They say, well, no, it's only four, because one's already had it and they were already counted, or vice versa. The state says, oh, we have your total of five, but we say, well, we think it's only four. They go back and forth on that as well. So it's a, it's a, we're a day behind in all reporting. Tonight, we get our numbers. We, I mean, we probably have them right now.
Yeah, that answers it for me. So the local board of health is 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 on this trajectory all the time?
Test current is, is, she spits out numbers all day, every day.
Yeah.
And.
And they know where the, where the outbreaks are concentrated from?
Yep, we know exactly where the outbreaks are. They know exactly where the, what what days these things happen and why.
Yeah.
Through the contact tracing, and and it's a huge undertaking.
Thank you, Ayud.
Hetzel, anything further on the remote one?
I mean, I talk about changing the language here. And I just wanna make sure it's worth it such a way, but you still have the ability to make that decision. You know, immediately without this.
Absolutely.
I understand, you know, we need our approval to do something long term, but on an emergency, and that's kinda what this touch is based on, you do need to be able, you need that ability to make, call the shot.
Absolutely.
And perform us as soon as possible. As long as that's still in there, I'm very happy with this and Ayud, thank you.
I think the language we talked about gives us all what we need.
Yeah.
I can do what I need to do, and you guys can do what you need to do to protect it.
All right, next one is the Title IX forms and samples.
All right. So this is an adoption of a giant policy. Michael Osh is here, because he worked with Attorney Joyce on this, and this is a whole new law change. And under that, everything we gotta include in this entire Title IX thing. So I'm gonna let Mike answer any questions you have. My advice to the committee is Attorney Joyce in his office, so they represent, I don't know how many school systems, but a lot. I've been very happy with his work for the four plus years I've been here. They've worked a ton on this, and what they do is bring us, they protect us. So they, they do what Bruce does for you guys on our side. So all the student rights stuff, special ed, equity access, all those things is what they do for us. So his office is providing us with a document that would now, and they can get understand, when the law changed, it's put a huge burden on local districts that we have to do so much more work. And that's what this document now provides us, is all the tools and resources to do the work if these issues come up.
So I'm I'm gonna spare the committee the almost eighty pages of of policy there.
I think it's 93.
Or ninety, 93. I guess the question I would ask is, if this policy is in concert with the law states, then for me, that's enough. Because you can have whatever policy you want, but at the end of the day, the law's gonna rule the day, whatever the law is when it comes to timeline. So I'm assuming if it came out of Attorney Joyce's office, that it probably is well-referenced with the law. So if you wanna give us some highlights about it, and then I guess I'll open up to Mr. Corey and Mr. Hetzel if they have any specific questions about it. But I guess the only thing I'm concerned about is if it's, if it's in concert with the law and we're protected with it, then I'm I'm good with it.
Yep, it is definitely in concert with the law. Title IX regulations were finalized this past May. It went into effect on August 14th. Regulations really went into a much more, as Dr. Malone noted, prescriptive grievance process. And really kind of a resource needed investigation process for the district. It also created, it moved it from a single investigative process to a much, a much. It also created, it moved it from a single investigator process to a much more in-depth district team, which we have identified and moved forward for the process. And really just, you know, implementing those procedures for the district. Why we've engaged Michael Joyce and his team for training for the district for what has been put forward for the procedures.
Most of it's, it's now managing all the training and compliance stuff that Mike has to, his umbrella has to work with all employees.
Any specific questions, Mr. Corey and Mr. Hetzel, for Mr. Loach? None?
Oh, I mean, we have, this is all new stuff now, so we had some of this prior and now it's being updated.
So Title IX has been around since the sixties, I think?
Right, but this is all the news.
This is all new, it came out of the court ruling or the law that was passed. And so this updates everything.
Further definition of what sexual harassment is, what exactly falls under Title IX and then what we would actually look to review under Title VII. There's really two major differences in doing investigation.
Perfect, thank you. Last one was the internet and network acceptable use policy, which is desperately needed now with the fact that our students are tied to their Chromebooks.
So for years, we had a couple of different things in place. And we kinda piecemeal some stuff when we went to through our remote learning in the spring. We've asked, this came out, I think it was committee member Aggy originally asked to review the policies. What I did was, we looked at what we had, I said, we have too many. And I went to Attorney Joyce and said, here's what I need. And he looked at everything we had and he put it all together. And that, what he tells me is that if the school committee approves this technology policy, we don't need anything else, and it even includes the one acceptable use form, so we don't have fifteen different acceptable use forms. So this is all inclusive of everything that we've already had in place and organize it in such a way to make it user-friendly to read and understand.
So I know where those comments come from, with Miss Aggy, because there was a time, particularly at the high school, Spots will probably remember it, where there was an encouragement to bring in your own technology, whether it was a smartphone, iPad, for the purposes of doing work. Because we didn't have the technology in place up there for students to have access. So and because most, if not majority of our students had access to smartphones and iPads and tablets, it was encouraged that they bring those to school, we gave them access to the internet and wifi and they could use them while they were doing schoolwork. I will say this, that I think now that we're in a position where they have Chromebooks and they have access to the technology, I, I think these can be very distracting. I speak just as a parent on that front, because, you know, anybody who has teenage kids know that this is like another appendage. It's like, it's stuck in their hands most time. So I would just say that as long as the policy, you know, speaks to that regard, I want, I want them to have access. You know, there's always a joke in the house that, you know, get the worldwide web at the tip of your fingertips. And it's true, you can find out anything in a moment's notice. You don't even have to type sometimes, just ask Alexa or whoever's in your house with you and she'll tell you. But I, I just don't want our policy to open up Pandora's box in terms of students feeling like this is acceptable if they're sitting here pounding away on their phones and just using it as, because on these phones, you know, there can be trouble, troubled waters.
Well, what we asked specifically, Mike, to do was put the authority to each building leadership team on those decisions, and he's done that. And it covers us and it puts responsibilities with the parents' responsibilities, with the students, with the adults. I think he's done a great job. Because you gotta remember, I had like ten different things all over different places in the policy manual for everything that's covered here. He put it all together, cleaned it up, got tight on our approval process. I was really happy with what he did because basically his words to me were, yeah, Matt, you got what we find in a lot of places, a mess of ad, continual years of just adding stuff without cleaning everything and aligning it. So I think it's a good place for us to adopt this or recommend it to the committee to adopt. And then with all policy, just monitor it, and we have to make changes and then bring them back to this group.
Mr. Corey, Mr. Hetzel? I, I, and I'll end with this, that, you know, it would give the onus, obviously, to building principals, but for a place like the high school, that's a huge undertaking for, you know, the, the staff up there to be, you know, policing the use of cell phones in classrooms and stuff. So, you know, the policy may have good intentions, but its enforcement or its day-to-day practice may become difficult. And I don't wanna tie the hands of our administrators of focusing solely on being, you know, the cellphone police, if you will, up there. So we'll have to keep an eye on it, and if it becomes an issue, then we can decide, I guess, as a, as a district, where we wanna go with it, but.
I actually do have a question.
Sure, Mr. Corey.
So, Dr. Malone, referring to the high school, even possibly the middle school, maybe even assistant superintendent Ponce could weigh in, as far as the use of cell phones are concerned. A lot of teachers are asking kids to still use these for research within a classroom. Is that still being, and I know in the middle schools now, we've got, we've got the Chromebooks for every kid. So maybe the middle schools are often alleged, but what about the high school, Dr. Malone? So all, all the kids covered with Chromebooks at the high school?
Right now, with the order that just came in, and the number of kids, we're, we're about ninety percent able to go one-to-one. And we haven't done that because we got some kids that, again, that have brought their own Chromebooks, those things. We're not using phones as the learning device.
Of course it was, I mean, it has, it's been, it's been part of our practice.
It has the ability, right. Because you can do research on it, but, right? So, yeah, go ahead, but, but in terms of the, what the high, like, we're using Chromebooks as the learning device. That's the platform.
Which I'm just worried about kids having their cell phones and then getting errant with it, you know what I mean?
I think it's real clear, they're not supposed to have those on during the day, they're not supposed to be used. The network, it's our network, so anything you try to do using our access point is monitored and we're able to control that. If you try to log in and use our network, you can't use certain things. So, I mean, we've got a pretty good monitoring framework in place.
Good.
It's not perfect, and we're learning as we go, but I mean, like little things, like we've had YouTube blocked for years here, right? And YouTube is bad because you go on YouTube and you see all sorts of stuff, but at the same time, there's also a ton of good educational stuff.
Yeah, of course.
You know, how can you unblock some things and not unblock others? So I think YouTube's actually getting better with that and the Google stuff's getting better. So we're all getting better with the use of it because it's gonna be the future.
It's a, it's a touchy, it's a touchy subject. It's a sensitive subject because even though there's a policy in place, human behavior sometimes oversteps policy and on both sides, on the students' part and as well as the parents' part. And, and back in my day, I remember many parents calling their kids right in the middle of a classroom session, you know? And I just thought it was extremely distracting.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody involved.
I agree, and, you know, the, the best part of this policy is at the last, on the last page, where it's a modification. If the school committee reserves the right to change, implement, or do anything they want with any part of this policy at any time. That's what it says.
Good.
So we have the ability to come back and make changes.
More seconds, please, here.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. Is there a motion to refer those policies to the full committee to consideration? Made by Mr. Hetzel, is there a second, a second by Mr. Corey, roll call?
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Last agenda item is new business. Does any member of the subcommittee have an item for discussion that wasn't recently anticipated by the chair forty-eight hours prior to tonight's meeting?
I do, I do. It's, it's an idea called the Rule of Three. And, and it speaks to when a student has to meet with a teacher after hours, that there will also be some other witness in the room. You know, somewhere along those lines. And it's, it's something I would probably have to look into the future to create. But it's, it's an idea whose, whose maybe time has arrived.
So what I would say, Mr. Corey, is to try to gather up as much information on that concept or if there's established policy somewhere. Sounds like we're gonna be having another policy subcommittee meeting at some point.
Yeah.
Maybe it can be discussed embedded first to find out what would be required to have something similar to that and work those kinks and bugs out before it comes back, but.
Sure.
Let me do some homework with my network. The concept would be there's a policy that's very brief, that's about individual interactions with students. And it would direct the superintendent to develop an operational protocol, which could be something like the Rule of Three, which is a common practice in a lot of places. So just so everyone else understands, we've had several instances over the last couple of years that we had to investigate on things like that that could have all been avoided if there was more than one person in the room.
Okay. Anything further, Mr. Corey? Thank you for that, Mr. Hetzel? I would say a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Made by Mr. Hetzel, is there a second? By Mr. Corey, roll call?
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.